Well, political.
Okay, we'd like to welcome you here tonight. We appreciate your attendance. This is a great turnout, so thank you for coming. I really appreciate it. It's a great night when we have the citizens come, so thank you very, very much. We'll start with an invocation. Councilman Snellson will give our invocation, then we'll have a pledge by Councilman Jensen.
Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet this evening as a community. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to live here and with the association that we have with one another. We ask for thy spirit to be with us tonight as we discuss pertinent issues pertaining to the city, pray that we can discuss those things civilly and with great respect. We're thankful for the many blessings that thou has given us, especially as citizens here, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Can we rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, I need a motion on the meeting's agenda.
I'm motioning to approve the meeting's agenda as written.
Could we ask if you want to continue item four, please?
Oh, but that was the consent agenda, though, yes?
Yeah.
You want to mark it that now?
You can do it on the consent agenda as well, if you want to do that in that motion.
Well, as part of that motion, we're going to remove item four from the consent agenda, if we could, and just continue it until next meeting.
Okay, have a motion? Do I have a second?
One other item. In the closed session, we discussed an item that also needed to be added. Do we have to add that now?
It's actually on your agenda, councilman.
Number seven.
It's number, yeah. It's the first item of the regular agenda.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wonderful. We'd like to welcome students who are here and scouts who are here. Is there anybody here just to see what the heck goes on in a city council meeting? Are y'all here for a purpose? Oh, the chief does. Yeah, okay. Do you want to come sit up on the stand with us and kind of see? No, I'm just kidding you. Okay, super. Well, we have no presentation of the mayor awards tonight, but we do have a very special swearing in. So, Kim, where are you? There you are. Would you like to come and just say a few words or...? Oh, yeah, got another Kim over here. So, Kim Bingham, you want to come up and just introduce this topic and just let everybody know what's going on, so. I put you on the spot.
We just started a new year for the youth city council, so we had our first meeting a few weeks ago, and we have a lot of fun service events they're going to do for the community and getting to know the community members better. So, we're excited to be sworn in tonight.
Great, thank you, Kim. And Kim and Craig, her husband, are the leaders of the youth council, and they've just done a wonderful job. I mean, they, for the last three years you've been doing it, does that sound right?
We started in 2020.
Okay, 2020, wonderful. So, it's just been wonderful, and they've had such great involvement with all the projects, and I won't name them all, but... And how many did you have at the meeting, or how many do you have that's on the youth council?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, wonderful, great. All right, sounds good. Well, if you would like to come up, I get to swear you in. So, I am not going to swear at you, but I will...
Swear with you.
Swear with you. So, everybody who's on the city council or on the youth city council, come on up, and I'm going to come down and be in front of you.
They all want our jobs, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Okay, are you ready? Now, those who are in my neighborhood know this, at least I think they've heard this. Why do you raise your right hand to the square? Why do you use your right hand? Okay, this is something for you to learn. The right hand is used as a token of an oath, okay? That's the oath hand that you make promises with. So, when you go to court and they say, "Raise your right hand to the square," that's because they're using this hand to make your oath or your promise. So, you're going to be making a promise here or an oath and that sort of thing. So, when you shake someone's hand, why do you use your right hand? Because it's a token of friendship, okay? All right, raise your right hand to the square and say your name out loud. Say your name out loud, just everybody all at once. Very good. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support...
That I will support.
...obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances...
And the laws and ordinances.
...of Springville City.
Of Springville City.
And that I will...
And that I will.
...to the very best of my ability...
To the very best of my ability.
...faithfully discharge my duties...
Faithfully discharge my duties.
...as a member of...
As a member of.
...the Springville Youth Council.
The Springville Youth Council.
Thank you. Welcome to the council.
Okay, the Springville has gifts for you guys.
One of them, you've got to go. So, if you just want to take one?
Well, thank you very much for attending. We really, really appreciate you being a part of it. You are welcome to stay. We would love to have you stay. It makes us feel so loved, but if you don't want to stay, you don't have to stay, so. You're welcome to go outside and take some pictures if you'd like to, so.
We're out.
Oh, yeah, 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 I wanted to do that, yeah, yeah.
Or suddenly not that important.
No.
Okay, we'd like to mention anybody who is remaining, that if you want to make public comment to the city council, you need to see Kim. I have one item here, so if there's anybody else that would like to make a comment to us, you're more than welcome to come and make it known to us. We do this only so that we know your name for the record and that you're a member of Springville, so. Yeah. So, the public comment that I have is Coley Bates. If she'd like to come up and take three or four minutes with us and tell us what is on her mind. We can't take any official action, and generally not a lot of discussion, but you are more than welcome to address and let us know kind of what you're thinking about, so. What's that?
I got backup.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I wrote it down because I hate talking in front of people, so I'm just going to read it. As I said, my name is Coley Bates, and I live on the corner of the four-way stop on Ninth South and Eighth East. I'm here today with some of my neighbors to raise some concerns with the new roundabout plans for this four-way stop. The proposal plan says that a roundabout is being proposed to help cut down traffic on this road and to help with pedestrian safety in crossing the street. I strongly believe a roundabout will have the opposite effect. First, this area is only heavily trafficked three times a day, the beginning of school, lunch, and end of school. Adding the additional road of Eighth East to make it a five-way road instead of a four-way will not decrease traffic but increase it during these times of day. The road directly behind me is the Sage Creek Elementary School Road. Adding access to this intersection will increase school traffic, so now both elementary and high school traffic will be using the roundabout during these heavily trafficked areas. Secondly, adding a roundabout will be extremely dangerous for pedestrians and drivers. This road during high-traffic times is primarily used by inexperienced teenage drivers who don't know how to use a roundabout safely. Currently, high school drivers are barely stopping at the stop sign as it is and often roll through that stop. Adding a roundabout means that they won't have to stop at all and will fly through that road not knowing, not looking for other cars, pets, or kids. The proposal says that by cutting crossing from 12 feet to six feet with a roundabout will be safer, but in reality that adds to the danger. Now, children have to cross the street twice, once to the middle and then to the other side instead of just once, which increases the chance of not being seen. Roundabouts are also hard to see around, and with cars flying through the roundabout, they will have little time to react to a child crossing on the other side. This four-way stop is heavily trafficked with pedestrians, mostly children crossing for school. A much safer alternative to a roundabout that would cut down on traffic during these three times a day as well as keep our kids safe when crossing would be a traffic light. This way, drivers are forced to stop and pedestrians can cross at the light. I know traffic lights are more expensive, but I'm a firm believer that the city values the lives of its citizens and especially young children, and money should not be a reason why we risk their life. If you are completely set on the roundabout and it's not something that we can still change, then I'm asking that you rewrite the current plans. Currently, the way it's drawn, the roundabout will block my driveway and my neighbors around the intersection driveways, so when we are leaving our homes, we have to back straight into the entry points of the roundabout, causing congestion, and when we want to return, we have to do a U-turn every day since the median will block us from turning left into the houses. My next-door neighbors are renting their basement, and their driveway would be completely inaccessible. This also takes away any street parking, so any deliveries, post office, garbage trucks, visitors, emergency vehicles would have to park clear down the road and walk to our house. We also would not be able to put trash cans out on the street as it would block the entrance to the roundabout. These plans are currently very inconvenient and unsafe for the current residents living at this intersection. I appreciate all you do for the city and taking my concerns into consideration. Thanks.
Well, for somebody who doesn't like speaking, you did a great job, so. That's great. What's your, what's the address that you're at? What address are you at? Okay, so are you on the... Because there's, there's 800 East, okay.
So, we can bring the map up.
You can bring them, bring up the GIS map.
That's okay, you want to flip it around?
I live here.
He's actually going to flip it around.
Well, so you live on the dead end right now, then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
No, no, she's next to the dead end.
Next to the dead end.
She's that, she's that kind of tan-colored house that's right tucked right in the corner.
So, is it this one right here? Is this the one you live on?
You, you can go, you can go over there, Coley, with Troy and just use the mouse and point to it.
Okay, so I live on this house.
You live next to Helen Beerdall?
No, I live next to them. So, they, they live here.
One more. One more house.
One more, okay, okay, okay.
One more to the west.
And then this house is the neighbor that's renting, so this is their main entry. This is a driveway that is their basement apartment, so people live there, and so the current plans that I have have this driveway completely blocked, so they can't even get in and out. Because right now, this is the street for them. They're coming in and out, and the roundabout makes it so there's not even a street right there.
Okay.
You guys live in the, in the house on the other, across the corner, right?
The Nords live here.
Yeah, okay.
So, this house, this house, this house, this house...
We're all here tonight.
And this house will all be blocked on their driveways with the plan that it's currently at.
Okay. Okay. Well, we don't have our public works person here to maybe talk with you, but we'll take your considerations and concerns into account as we... And this is all proposed. I mean, there's, nobody's turning dirt.
Is there an email or a phone number on there? If we could get those added, Public Works will be happy to schedule a meeting and talk through some of those issues.
I don't. Well, Coley, do you have an email that you want to add to this?
Email or a phone number, either one.
Sure.
You can just write it on there.
Yeah, come on up here.
In fact, anybody that would like to be involved in a meeting or a discussion would be happy to do that.
Nope, that's good.
Yeah, we can hand it around to you. Just get it back up here before we're done, that's fine. Mayor, why don't you just let her take it? She'll hand it to our neighbors.
Why don't you take it and just let, anybody who wants to be part of the process here, so.
Yeah, just put some contact information on there, and then Public Works will reach out to you here in a few days.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cole.
Bishop Nord has hid under his hat. I can't even recognize him.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and as this progresses, I mean, this is all part of kind of a distribution, traffic study through that whole area that's going on, so. But it's all being discussed, so this is a perfect time for you to be here to go through this, okay? Some of us are old enough to remember when that blocked road was a through road, so, and you have to be a little more aged to...
And the other road didn't even exist.
And the other road didn't exist.
Yeah, the Eighth South, that wasn't there.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, Coley. Good to see you. All right, let's move to the consent agenda with items three and five. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, I need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
With item...
With item four continued.
Okay, sounds good. I have a motion, a second, a roll call vote. Mr. Snellson?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Cr, Ms. Grandle?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Let's take just a moment. John, if you want to take just a moment, Mr. Penrod, and we apparently have an award that we want to...
We do have an award, Mayor, but there's somebody that's a lot more official than me. He's coming in April to present in front of the council.
In April?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we can talk about it tonight. If you want to wait, though, we could do it more official in April.
Let's do it more official in April, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, number six. That's why you were getting up. Okay.
So, Mayor, councilmembers, this is an item that comes to the city from a developer in Spanish Fork. I apologize, I didn't have this up before this meeting. But what I'm pulling up is a map to better explain what this item is. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your patience with me there. So, what we're looking at here with this item is a developer who owns property in Spanish Fork, and you can't really see the line, but the Springville-Spanish Fork line comes something like this, and then it heads this direction. And so, the developer owns property over here. The city actually owns property right across the boundary into the city. The city owns this property, property here and property over here, and then also this property that I'm pointing to. Just to give everybody an understanding where this property is, over to the right of the screen is 51 that goes from Springville into Spanish Fork, and then if you go to the left, you have that newer road that comes down from 1600 South and then goes into kind of Lowe's and Walmart and that area. And so, what the item is, is a couple weeks ago, we were approached by the developer in Spanish Fork because there's a gap between the city's property and the developer's property in Spanish Fork, and the developer would like to see us do a quick claim deed or sign a quick claim deed from the city to the developer in Spanish Fork. We have had a title company look at this. We've also had our own engineers look at it, and I've looked at it myself. It does appear to be a true gap there. We can't find any interest of who owned that property prior. With that situation, really the city has the ability to also have an interest in that property, and so at this point, I don't know that we would want to just quick claim that property to them, but the developer also is trying to move transaction forward pretty fast. So, it'd be my suggestion that you give the mayor the authority to negotiate with the developer and also the authority to sign a quick claim deed. Any questions for me?
So, I have the motion here. I'm just going to go ahead and read this if you guys are all right with it. I motion to approve giving the mayor the authority to negotiate the terms and conditions for the city to sign a quick claim deed between Springville City and Elevate Development Partners LLC for properties, for property located in Spanish Fork, for parcels 26-052-0037 and 26-052-0022, and if the terms are approved by the mayor, the mayor may execute the said quick claim deed.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
That's a roll call vote. Craig?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Okay, Josh, you're up.
Thank you. We have, the first item tonight is a request from Springville Community Development, a staff-initiated request to amend the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan to adjust a criteria, establish criteria for eve type and width, and to clarify that the open side of certain unit types face the street side yard on corner lots, and we'll get into those two elements. On eve design, the design standards that we adopted for the Westfield Central had a very specific measurement for eve width of 18 inches minimum, and that eve width is not appropriate to all styles and implementations of eves on a pitched roof and obviously not something you'd want when we have a flat or a shed or other types of roof forms. So, we have taken to the planning commission and gotten a positive recommendation from them on essentially making the standard more general in that it asks the, or it requires that the eve is appropriate to the massing of the building and the architectural style, and that it's approved through the design review process. There's a special design review process established for this neighborhood in the development agreement, which requires the, any builder to bring plans to community development prior to the building permit application, to have those reviewed for architectural design. And then lastly, that the, the design considered a proportion of fascia trim width to the eve projection. Those are all kind of architectural elements, but again, this is the only residential product or residential subdivision of the city where architectural or design standards on eves are present, and we feel that having something more general that still allows some degree of collaboration and review, iterative review on this will really meet the goal of preventing builders from just cheapening the appearance of traditional architecture by employing overhangs and eaves that don't really, aren't appropriate to the style. This is not something I've had across the city, anyone particularly come up to me and say, "Hey, there's a house being built across the street from me, and the eves really bug me." So, I think it's a pretty low impact kind of change. It's something I notice, but my wife and my mom tell me a lot of times that I need to stop noticing things and just be happy with life. So, I think this is, just gives us that right amount of ability to collaborate and cooperate with the builders in coming up with and approving designs that are appropriate and work without over, being over specific and creating issues in regards to these special, really unique lot types with setback in building code and all kinds of other constraints that aren't as common in other larger lot subdivisions. Are there any questions on that element specifically?
So, yeah, being OCD and noticing everything like you, do I understand completely where you're coming from and where your wife and mother are coming from, but does the, does the basic design standard stay in the ordinance with this amendment forcing the builder to come to community development if they want to change that eve?
No, I, well, let me just make sure I understand you right. What will be present in the ordinance will be what's written in the resolution and just will state these three, these four elements. Essentially, that 18-inch measurement won't be there...
Okay.
...anymore, so it will just basically be a per, per design review process where we come to an agreement on what works.
Okay, but they do, they do have to come to community development...
Yes.
...for that review?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but all the design standards remain except for the eves, and that'll be... and that'll be reviewed by Josh. Does I?
Everything is reviewed by us, uh, and this is just changing the eve section from 18 inches to what's right for the design of the house.
Okay.
And my, my comment, I understand that we're not doing this, but I want the minutes to reflect that we asked this question. What we're approving tonight in this one and in the next one have nothing to do with setbacks, building height, or any of those things we've dealt with previously.
Correct.
So, if that question gets asked, the council did ask that question, and we're dealing strictly with eves and none of those other things of conflict.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the next element is, uh, a question that came up as we were, uh, working on a previous request from Lafferty Communities to change some setbacks in the cottage lots. And as we discussed that, actually, in the meeting, it really occurred to me that we didn't have this type of regulation that I first encountered in the Lakeside Landing District that we did after Westfield Central. And that is that where you have a lot type that has a narrower portion of the building connecting the primary building to an outbuilding such as the garage at the rear, that the side, the open side, uh, the side that actually is recessed, that when you have that condition and you're on a corner lot, that that side faces the street. So, the apparent mass and this, of the home is reduced at the street, and instead of having a street side yard here with just a straight wall, you would have that recess and, uh, see the reduced side, or reduced apparent, you know, visual impact of the building from the street by having that, uh, narrow section in the middle be open to the street instead of being the closed side to the street. And that only affects, uh, lot, lot types of, uh, listed in the amendment, which I think are cottages, houses, uh, and a couple other lot types that have this arrangement requiring the corner lots to be oriented as such. And that, again, doesn't change any setbacks. It doesn't, uh, add any density or change any height. It just, uh, requires the house, the side of the house that is indented to face the street side yard.
And that's, that, that's not affecting any square footage of lot size or building size or anything like that? It's just reorienting where that open space is.
Where you have this case, you couldn't have it, if this was, I should have redrawn a diagram so it made more sense. Just that this straight wall can't be your street side. You've just got to mirror that plan when you, when you get to that point. And, uh, came from the planning commission with a unanimous five to zero recommendation for approval on both of those items.
Okay, questions for Josh? Do you understand what you're doing? Okay, sounds good. I'll open it up for a motion.
Okay, I'll motion to approve ordinance number 05-2023, amending the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan design standards.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Liz?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to do it twice? Oh, I thought it said number five, I'm sorry. That's okay.
Now, he's got to talk about six, which is the.
Oh, which was eight.
The next one.
So, five?
I read seven, yeah.
You, you did, you did it correct.
Agenda item seven.
Item number seven took care of two things, the eves.
And there were two.
And then the, okay, great. Want to move to number eight?
Sorry. Uh, number eight, uh, this is a request coming from Lafferty Communities, the builder that has been working, uh, for a year plus to get some building going in the Westfield Central subdivision. And they have made it a request to amend the minimum lot width of the middle lot of the three-townhouse estate lot type from 30 feet to 28 feet. And, uh, as this amendment evolved from the, uh, the first language that we started with, uh, the ordinance you have before you and what was presented to the planning commission was to actually do a minimum of 27 feet and allow that for the middle lot on a, uh, I can actually, let me come down to the language first, then I'll come back to these diagrams. For the three, three-townhouse estate, it would take the, uh, any of the three lots, could come down to 27 and a half feet minimum in width, but the three lot grouping of the three-townhouse estate would need to maintain the 90-foot minimum total. So, your overall width for each of those three lots doesn't change, and the overall width of the building wouldn't change. It just real allocates where the property lines are between them. And then, on the townhouse park under type, it would allow any of those lots just to go to the 27 and a half feet. To address any potential concern that that could allow additional lots, it, if you do the math to how many units you'd have to get before you got to another, you'd have to, you know, you'd be 15 across, somewhere in that range. And also, the, the lot mix is, uh, the numbers of units in the lot mix is established in the regulating plan, so there wouldn't be ability to, uh, change any of those counts of lots or, uh, lot types without, uh, returning to the council. So, for the, uh, the existing standards right now require all the lots to be 30 feet. Uh, but the way it was platted, the plat, the origin, the, uh, group that platted the subdivision did not give any additional width to the outside lots. And they have an eight-foot side setback, so that reduces the buildable area of those outside lots to 22 feet while leaving 30 on the interior lot. And then, this allows a closer, not perfectly, uh, equal, but a closer, uh, allocation of width between the units and suits the, the plans that Lafferty is working on, uh, better for their purposes. Uh, and again, as you can see between these, it doesn't change the, uh, outside width of the building or the width of the lot. It just moves the, the lot lines between the units. And on the three-townhouse estate, uh, that lot type is designed to look like a large home, so you won't actually be able to s, see where one unit starts and one ends. On the townhouse park under, those will be, look more like discreet townhomes than you'll notice, but, uh, I'm not sure I would be able to call out which one was 27 and a half feet and which one was 30. That also came to you, uh, comes to you from the planning commission with a five to zero recommendation for approval. And on this item, we had two members of the public attend the meeting that are neighborhood residents, but did not, uh, address the, the planning commission with any concerns. And, uh, we did provide notice and got this out, uh, to the Facebook page, which has been a really good conduit for communicating with that, with that neighborhood.
Okay, questions for Josh on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then for, for this ordinance.
I'll motion to approve ordinance number 06-2023, amending the Westfield Central New Neighborhood Plan townhouse lot width.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Snelsen?
Yes.
Mr. Sornson? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Grandell?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
I did have one question, but it wasn't pertinent to the ordinance.
Go ahead.
Just as, have there been any building permits pulled for any of this yet?
No, uh, Lafferty Communities is working, uh, to bring, uh, the first set of permits in in the next probably six weeks and, and get moving on that.
That's from any builder?
Any builder. They're the only builder, uh, that we have had communication from that has, uh, gotten, uh, control of some lots in this subdivision.
How many units will their portion be?
So, they have 63, 64 lots in this first two blocks that they're gonna take down.
Great, sounds good. Thank you, Josh. All right, sounds good. Anything else that we need to go through from a city council standpoint? Yes?
I, we haven't talked about this yet, Mayor, but it, it being that some people are gone next meeting, um, we, we will need to do, uh, a budget meeting in late April, uh, which we normally do. I don't know if now's a good time to maybe check some calendars.
Okay. What are you thinking?
We, we haven't, we haven't talked to the staff, so really, if there's, if there's availability probably in that last week in April, um, we would take it.
April 27th?
No. Not the 27th.
Twenty, 25th is parboard.
Yeah, earlier in the week.
24th?
26th, 24th?
26th.
I'd prefer the 24th, I think, but I don't care.
24th's good for me.
Is it in the evening or?
Uh, yeah, probably, um, you know, normally, we kind of work towards, uh, an evening and work backwards on that to late afternoon, depending on how much time we need with it. I would certainly pencil the 24th.
How much time do you anticipate it will take?
I, I mean, we haven't started setting an agenda up. We've changed our budget process. I anticipate you'll hear more from the directors in this one than, uh, we have in the past couple of years, uh, at that, um, you know, four to six hours is what we've been taking the last couple of years, and hopefully, we could do it in that amount of time. So, late afternoon to early evening.
I'd prefer the 24th.
Yeah, what about the Monday, the 24th?
Okay with me.
Liz?
All right.
Okay, 24th.
We'll pencil that in, thank you.
And the time?
But why don't we put in 4 o'clock and then we can adjust that if need be?
Okay, 4 o'clock it is. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
Have a motion?
That's okay.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You didn't even get on that fast enough.
I think we're good, we're out of here, Mayor.